Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Time is now, um, 9:46. Vice President Austin has found a seat.
And a new identity.
Presently, and a new identity. And a quorum is present, and some are on the phone. We'll hear that in just a moment from Eileen. The State Board of Ed meeting of February 9th, 2010 is called to order. First item is the approval of an agenda and order of priority. Is there a motion?
Yes.
One second.
Moved by Johns, ordered by Nance. Any modifications? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thanks for being here, even with the start of the snow. I was a little late myself. We had a, kind of, an extended cabinet meeting, which I didn't dare walk out of early, but I sometimes do. And Eileen's gonna do traditional introductions, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will first introduce the board members, then department staff, and some of our regular attenders that are here today. At the head of the table and chairman of the State Board of Education is Mr. Mike Flanagan, Superintendent of Public Instruction. Next to Mr. Flanagan is Mrs. Kathleen Strauss from Detroit, President of the Board. Next to Mrs. Strauss is our guest board member today. Rochelle Price is our techie and assisting John in getting his computer hooked up, so. Next is Mr. John Austin from Ann Arbor, Vice President of the Board. On the telephone today, Carolyn, are you on the phone? She's not yet on the phone, Carolyn Curtin. She is out of state, and we do plan on her joining the phone. She is the Board Secretary and resides in Everett.
Okay, nice.
Next is Mary Ann Yared McGuire, Treasurer of the Board from Detroit. And Mary Ann, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mary Ann.
Next we have Nia Harden. Nia represents Governor Granholm as the Education Policy Advisor. And next we have Mr. Rob Stevenson, the 2009-10 Michigan Teacher of the Year. And when he's in the classroom, he teaches the 3rd grade at Ward Cliff Elementary in the Ochamas Public Schools. Moving across the table, Ms. Cassandra Albridge, member from Rochester Hills. The next empty chair is that of Reginald Turner from Detroit. I'm trying to track him down. We don't know if he's-
He's not coming today.
You heard that?
What you did too.
Next is Mrs. Elizabeth Fowler, member from Birmingham. And then we have Nancy Danhoff from East Lansing. And Nancy represents the State Board as its delegate to the National Association of State Boards of Education. Department of Ed staff, Sally Vaughn, Chief Academic Officer and Deputy Superintendent, Earl Wolenberg, Deputy Superintendent, Martin Ackley, Director of Communications, Andrea Post, Administrative Aid to the Superintendent, Lisa Hanskynak, Legislative Director, Lindy Bush, Director of Education, or Early Childhood Education and Family Services, Mary Ann Chartran, Director Grants Coordination and School Support, Mary Alice Galloway, Director Education Improvement and Innovation, Laura Jenkins, Director of Professional Preparation, Joseph Martino, Director Education Assessment and Accountability, Mike Redkey snuck in just a minute ago, Director of Field Services, and Bruce Upstead, the State Director of Educational Technology. Some of our guests here today, Kathy Duesbury White, representing INM ISD, Bruce Fay, Wayne Risa, Casey Kefkin, Middle Cities Education Association, Pat McNeil, Michigan Association for Curriculum and Staff Development, Judy Pritchett, Macomb Intermediate School District, John Tomonovich, Michigan Association of Intermediate School District Administrators, and Belle Wimmer, Michigan Council of Charter School Authorizers.
There must be Carolyn.
Hello?
Hi, Carolyn.
Hello, Carolyn.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm late. I've been trying, trying to get through, and nobody was answering. I'm tardy, but I wasn't timed if I could've gotten through.
Well, we just got through with introductions.
Great.
Getting started.
Not that late.
And I see Gary New York back there also, representing the Michigan Association of Public School Academies.
Okay. Trying to get all the names here.
Hello?
Hello?
Here, Carolyn.
I'm having trouble hearing for some reason. Thank you.
We're just testing you, Carolyn. Our next item is the point of the day. We skip Marty every once in a while, but we bring him back based on popular demand, so today Marty's back with us for his point of the day.
I want to see your hands. Today's, uh, today's point of the day is on Race to the Top. And our ascent, Mount MOU. Race to the Top is a federal competitive grant, and part of the criteria was to get local school district support for the state's plan in the form of Memoranda of Understanding. So this year with our grant application, we had, oh, we had 761 school districts sign MOUs, which accounts for 90 percent of all school districts in Michigan, including traditional school districts, ISDs, and charter schools. It represents 3,351 school buildings in Michigan, which also represents 90 percent of all school buildings in Michigan. And those skilled buildings educate 1,438,001 children, and that represents 89 percent of the public school children in Michigan. We feel with this kind of support from local school districts, it strengthens our application for Race to the Top funds, and that's my point of the day.
Rocky road up that mountain. But I think everyone's on board now, so. First item is presentation on the Michigan test for teacher certification results, and if Sally and Flor and Steve would join us at the table. This test for teacher certification, it's for basic skills and contest, content tests. It's required for teacher certification in Michigan. The content tests are intended to improve the quality of Michigan teachers, obviously. Sally?
The content tests are developed using the standards that are aligned with and support the Michigan P-12 curriculum framework and the benchmarks, as well as the grade level of content expectation, the high school content expectations, and they also align with the National Professional Specialized Association standards. So there's an alignment both nationally and at the state level. This report provides individual teacher preparation institutions and the aggregate content area test pass percentages for '08 and 2008 and '09 as well as three-year comparisons, so we can start to see the trend for the past two years.
Flor?
Okay, thank you. And again, thanks to the board for allowing us to present these items to you this morning. And the first item is on the MTTC results for 2008 and '09. And Dr. Steve Stegic, who's our expert, will give you a brief overview about the item and any highlights that might be of interest to you.
So Steve?
Good morning. Essentially, this is consistent and continuing reports that we make on an annual basis to the board. All this information has been previously provided to the teacher preparation institutions, so they have seen this, they are working with it. And the thing I think to keep in mind is that this is one of the elements that goes forward in developing the teacher performance indicator score. This is not the basis of the score. This is only one year. You may recall that the teacher preparation institution score is based on a three-year aggregate, which will be presented to the board later this year, probably next month or the month following, which will then become the basis for actual development of the annual scores that are provided to teacher preparation institutions. In a certain sense, then, this is early information to the teacher preparation institutions about the impact of current one-year standings, and is not meant to say that any judgments are made or any recommendations are made to the board on the basis of the information about the teacher preparation institutions. As in the past, the report includes the aggregate for the institutions, the, in this case, the 37 that are currently on record as participating in this particular program, and it also presents the aggregate for the various content areas, the 70 or so that are actually tested in the programs. I think with that, I'll take questions, or we'll take questions or comments from the board members.
My turn.
Any board members? Nancy, please.
Just a quick question here, 'cause I apologize, I know I asked this last year, and I wish I could've remembered it, but I can't. When you see, when we start seeing a trend in a district, in a, in a, in a preparation institution for their percentages of pass that's, that is below what we would hope that it would be, is there any kind of remediation? Is there any kind of technical help? Is there any, what do we do to help them become more successful, or do we?
Well, the, the information is all given back to the institution so that they can start to take a look at those scores, those test scores, and see if there is a trend downward or not, and what they would need to do in terms of preparation. And at the institution level, their students can come back and ask for help, you know, if they didn't pass the test and they had some trouble, they could say, "Well, is there anything else that you can give me that I can do to try to do better on the test?" And then the institution representatives can recommend certain courses, or they can say, "There's some additional materials that you can pick up in the bookstore," or things that they can do to help possibly direct those students to prepare themselves better for the test. And I don't know, Steve, if you had any interaction with the institution?
I guess I'm not looking so much to the students, that if there's a repeat performance of this, then one would, one would start to conjecture that perhaps this isn't the problem with the student, but the problem with the program itself. And so that's what I'm trying to figure out, because we accredit those programs. Is there anything that we do in kind of a technical assistance vein?
The first two things really inform and advise, so this provides information, and then I do, our office does advise them on the impact of that information on the potential score that's going to develop later. And the institutions are very attuned to that already, so as soon as they get this report, they'll be calling, they have called me already to talk about their alignment to standards that the State Board has had, their understanding of the process of eligibility, where they actually agree that certain candidates are ready to take the test. Sometimes they have to work on that process.
Right.
You know, the candidates are taking the tests before they've completed at least 90 percent of their programs, and institutions are becoming, you know, very much aware of that and aligning their programs to that kind of eligibility process. The DARTEP, which is Directors and Representatives of Teacher Education Programs in Michigan, which meets about every five or six weeks, has this kind of report on their agenda, so at, anytime I'm at those meetings, I have to discuss that situation, have to talk about what can be done to advise it. Just at the last DARTEP meeting, I spent three or four hours working with institutions that are in a situation where the aggregates are less than 80 percent, talking to them about ways to work with their candidates using other skills or other ways of preparing them. So the formal pieces are really the inform and advise, but the active pieces are communicating directly with institutions that are in a situation where they could not score well later.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Kathy, please. And Liz?
I noticed that quite a few of the institutions are below 80 percent this time, and I, this is preliminary, so it's not the one that we use.
Well, this is official. Part of what's happening here is something that's noted in the kind of explanatory documents. Making comparisons across years, like what is available to us in Table 2, I think, or whatever, Table B, I guess, is 1B, where we can actually see, you know, those aggregates over years, is very, it's, you have to be careful when you look at them across years because every year there are some tests that are new, there are some tests that have their cut scores adjusted. And if there's a cut score change, that can impact the number of individuals that pass. And it happens that in October 2008, there was a cut score adjustment to about 40 of the tests. So in this period of '08-'09, we do see this, in some cases, obvious shift in the passing percentages. You know, that was part of the activity of the Standing Technical Advisory Council, which looked at some of the cut scores and said, "These need to be adjusted," and they were then adjusted, recommended to the superintendent for adjustment, and that's the impact, what we're seeing in '08-'09.
Boy, there are quite a few of them. So, is it one, I, refresh me here, is it just one year, or is it two years? How many years do they have to be below 80 before we have something?
Well, the decisions that we make for the teacher preparation institution performance score is based on a three-year aggregate.
Three-year average, okay.
So, so this value will represent one of the indicators that will be reported to the board for the period of '06-'09.
Okay.
And that will ameliorate some of this impact.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Liz, and then Cassandra.
Yeah. I guess the thing that I find interesting is looking at the areas in which students are studying and testing, and it seems almost with institution to institution that the numbers of students who are taking the tests in our science, technology, you know, mathematics numbers are going down, and yet that's the, we know, is the greatest need in our state for highly qualified personnel. And I'm wondering, I, you know, I know institutions like to admit all comers and stuff, but when we're graduating so many more people for teaching careers than we have openings for, is there some way that this information can be used to help people see that maybe we should focus on recruiting math, science, special education personnel, and maybe early, you know, elementary personnel? We should be raising the bar as far as who gets in and not graduating so many people? I don't know, it's just-
Well, in, in the teacher performance score that the board has developed, we, we have an incentive for high-needs areas.
Right.
So, so one of the ways that we do promote the sciences, math, special education is by giving credit for those high-needs areas. I apologize, I, I haven't got a percentage number in my head, so although the numbers are going down, I don't know if they're going down more or less than the overall average, the trend.
I think that's a good point. We should, we'll take a look at that, Liz.
Yeah. I, I went through and looked at every, every history and social. Because I am concerned.
We have a decline in enrollment.
Yeah, so if it's part of a general decline in enrollment, it just may be proportional, but we should take a look at that. And then we may want to look at the percentage that we put in for the performance score and see if that's weighted highly enough to really be an incentive to start to recruit students, but that's a good point.
The other opportunity-
Well, just, you know, read, read the paper yesterday about classrooms in Detroit where people are teaching chemistry and math without any preparation in those areas. We clearly need people with skills and knowledge in those areas.
Now, Liz, the other opportunity that we have is, I'm a little disappointed in the schools, because my first month here, I met with the deans and said, "I think you have a co-responsibility with us to fill these needs." And there was some pointed blowback even in the press after that, that frankly, one of them was along the lines that, you know, the state superintendent thinks we can take kids who love poetry and make them math teachers, which of course is not what the point was. And what I'm getting at is we finally have some leverage, because in the reform package that's out, we're going to be able to approve some alternative CERT programs. I was in Kalamazoo the other day visiting, which I'll speak about later, and met with superintendents there in Cleveland ISD, too. And just thinking out loud a little bit about their desire, they have, well, without jumping the gun on that program, the bottom line is they have a severe need in a couple of areas, so I looked at the ISD superintendent and said, "Well, maybe under this particular reform, you're going to want to do what's done in Texas and Pennsylvania, which is maybe become an alternative CERT option, but maybe you'd want to be in a very specific shortage area." You know, we might want to think about that when the time comes, that it's not like alternative CERT means we would necessarily approve them in all areas, but say, "Listen, if you've got a program in language, because we're so short, and you're willing to become an expert in that, and maybe even in conjunction with a university in your area, but that might be how we start to think about our alternative CERT options, is, is who's going to finally get the numbers up? Because otherwise, we're a dead meat." Very good point. Cassandra?
Yeah, you may have just answered my question, but I was just wondering about the downward trend in the number of students who are taking the test every year. Is that because the preparation institutions are becoming more discerning about the students, or because less students are choosing to go into this?
I think that, you know, it, like Sally said, it deals with the enrollment, and I think the enrollment numbers are probably down in, in most of the institutions, and so therefore you don't have as many people taking the tests. We know that, that we're probably seeing people take, you know, we're, we have fewer people, test takers, fewer test takers, so it's probably something to do with enrollment and enrollment in the university overall, and then enrollment in the teacher preparation programs.
Nancy, please.
Are these, to go along with that, I think the other piece that I heard earlier that I know we've heard from institutions that have come before us wanting conditional approval, that several, I even hate to use a descriptor, there are institutions who have used the test as an indicator of people who are able to go on and who are not, and they've said that when they've been here. If they understand that what happens is that puts them in jeopardy, as a couple of them have said, I'm wondering if some of this lowering of number is in fact lowering the number of times or the time in which students take the test, and if they're self-selecting out of the program before they even take the test now, because I would, that would make an impact.
Yeah, and that, that was one of the things that Steve worked with those institutions on, is they were using the test as a diagnostic tool, as opposed to what it was really established for. And so that may attribute to a small, I think a small portion of the number.
I'm not saying that is the reason, I'm just saying it's just a contributor.
Yeah, so, that could be.
Okay. Any further? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Next item is a presentation of the proposed standards for school counselors endorsement, preliminary employment authorization to work as a school counselor, and ultimately a school counselor license. And I think Beatrice is kind of replacing Steve and-
Musical chairs for a while.
My team here. Go ahead, Sal.
These standards have developed, been developed with the guidelines for the teacher-prep institutions that elect to renew their counseling program that has already been approved by the State Board, or institutions that are thinking of operating a program. The standards are developed with the assistance of representatives from 11 of the teacher-prep institutions that currently offer the approved programs, plus members representing the professional school counselor organizations. Lauren?
Thank you. The preparation of school counselors is currently guided primarily by current legislation and administrative rule, and with some influence from national standards. In order to further strengthen the preparation of our school counselors, we have worked with, as Sally said, a representative group of, of school counselor institutions to come up with these standards, which we think will help us to really focus in and, and work on strengthening our school counselor preparation program. And Ms. Harrison, Beatrice has been the person who has really worked with that group over the last, what, five years, six years? Anyway, it's almost 10 years. Okay, anyway, that's been, been part of her job, is to work with that group, so I'm going to let her kind of briefly tell you about the group, and then just a brief overview of what we're doing with the standards, and then we'll take questions.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to publicly thank the school counselor discussion group that Flor made reference to. That group has worked really diligently, as Flor mentioned, over the years, not only on the standards that we're proposing today, but also on various other projects that I'll share with you in just a second. But as a historical note, I just wanted to give you a little background regarding that group and some of the projects. Basically, under the facilitation of the director, previously Carolyn Logan, and Flor subsequently, the school counselor discussion group was created approximately 10 years ago, or maybe a little bit more, as a group that wanted to be able to come together with MDE to discuss various issues pertaining to the school counseling profession. Working collaboratively with a representative from the career tech of MDE, members of the in-state universities that currently offer approved school counselor ed programs, and members of those professional school counseling associations who constitute the school counseling discussion group, have worked and accomplished the following with the approval of the State Board. Basically, number one, in 1999, the preliminary employment authorization to work as a school counselor was initiated as an experimental program, but due to some of the successes of that program, we, a strong case was made for the continuation of that particular authorization, and it was approved as a permanent authorization in 2004. Secondly, in July 2000, the passage of House Bill 5740, Public Act 288, allowed for persons to be credentialed as a school counselor upon completion of all university criteria, and both the temporary school counseling authorization and the school counselor license were born out of those efforts. In 2005, the same group continued its work with the department and other stakeholders to restore tenure to persons holding a teaching certificate, but those who were serving exclusively in the role as a school counselor, and hence the Teachers' Tenure Act was amended via Rule 390661 to restore tenure to a mass number of school counselors in 2000 and, 2005. Prior to the proposal of these standards, that we worked on the administrative rules, which I think Flor mentioned, and so administrative rules that govern school counselors in Michigan, that was passed in 2006. So basically, in-state universities that have been granted approval to offer school counselor education programs have operated well by making recommendations under what I would call the traditional path, that is, persons who completed a teacher ed program with a guidance counseling endorsement being added to that teaching certificate. They've also made recommendations for those preliminary authorizations that I mentioned, and regarding the school counselor license. So for the most part, our in-state universities have worked under the auspices, as I think Flor also alluded to, the American School Counselor Association, the National School Counseling Association, in sync with Michigan's comprehensive and guidance counseling program. What's been somewhat problematic is that Michigan, up until now, Michigan has not had its own school counseling standards as a tool for measuring if our in-state universities do what they propose, that is, effectively prepare persons to serve in the role as a school counselor. That being said, the school counselor group has worked to bring this proposal to the table. If you, I believe you have the proposal in front of you, and I just wanted to go over a couple notes on that. On page three of that proposal, it's set up where, page three, paragraph two, you'll see references, the in-state credentials I noted previously, the NT endorsement, the preliminary authorization, and then the school counselor license, which is for both in-state and out-of-state applicants. The proposal that we bring to you is really necessary so that in-state institutions that wish to offer a new program to prepare school counselors will submit an application for program approval, and have a mechanism by which to demonstrate how the new standards are met within our institutional curriculums. Additionally, all existing programs will need to demonstrate compliance with the newly proposed standards as they are reviewed for an updated program approval process. Overall, the standards are needed so that Michigan institutions will align their programs with state curriculum standards for school counselor educators. Lastly, if you turn to page five and six of that same proposal, you'll notice there's a matrix, and that matrix has in the first column, the requirements for credentials, and then the following columns list the credentials that I've already mentioned. The grade levels are such that at the elementary level, a person could be credentialed at the K through 8, or 6 through 8, and at the secondary level, 6 through 12, and for either elementary or secondary, K through 12. Page six lists the proficiency level, levels that were assigned- Page six lists the proficiency levels that were assigned to each one of the standards listed on pages seven through nine, and as you can see, we listed A for general awareness, B for basic understanding, and C for comprehensive understanding. In conclusion, if the board has no objections and gives an initial approval of these standards, this document would be forwarded to local school districts, educational associations, professional school counselor members for review and feedback in March, or ideally April of this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Beatrice.
And I was going to turn it over to Mike, but I'll turn it over to Kathy. Any questions? Are there any questions? Or comments?
Liz?
Yeah. There are several places in the document where it refers to all students, and in my mind, all means all, and I'm wondering if the phrase "all students" is sufficient to alert counselors in training and people preparing them, that it includes English-language learners and kids with disabilities. We, in some of our other professional standards, we actually spelled out, in the professional standards for K-12 teachers and high school teachers, we spelled out all students, including students who are English-language learners and persons with disabilities. So that may come up in the...
Liz, probably what we'll do is even before we put it out for public comment, we'll include that, so it's...
Yeah, I think it'll be a question you'll get, because, and then, to the groups that you send it to for comment, to be sure that the Special Education Advisory Committee is one of those groups.
Right, definitely.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? John, please. Nancy?
Mostly curious, since you've been working with the counselors, A, I'm sure these standards are going to be very helpful to help counselors be effective, but there have been a number of national studies in recent years sort of underscoring the importance of counseling, and generally sort of the understaffing of the counselor ranks and the overwhelming challenge that our counselors face. Are our counselors being cut back with the fiscal crisis? Are they increasingly over, outgunned by the numbers of students and demoralized? Or are we doing anything, I mean, it's hard for us to do anything absent more money to hire more counselors to change that trajectory, but I'm curious what you're feeling and seeing out there. I see Rob nodding his head, too.
I can comment on that if you'd like. In my own district, and then I'll defer to you as well, in my own district, we've seen a significant cutback in the years that I have taught there, and now we've got shared counseling services between buildings, and so you have individuals who are going to service multiple buildings with a ridiculous caseload that isn't really manageable, and it really undermines the integrity of the position, which is unfortunate. Something else, if I could, I wanted to make a comment, too. I'm glad to see the specific grade range of credentials, because the needs are so different when we're talking K-8, 6-8, and going into the high school years as well. So I was glad to see that specified range there. But I'll defer back to you with John's comment.
Yes, I do hear that definitely school districts are tending to cut back, but the problem with that is they're not really cutting back the roles and responsibilities that are assigned to counselors. In Michigan, there's, in the school counselor group, if they were sitting here, they'd say, this is part of the problem, because regularly, there are reports of unfortunate school districts that are hiring other persons that are fulfilling the roles and responsibilities that are supposed to be specific to school counselors, and replacing them with persons that are not appropriately credentialed to serve those roles, and giving them long lists of other titles, unfortunately.
Yeah, and we have talked about the ratio of students to counselors, and I think at this point, it's something like 500 to 1, or...
600, or 600 to 1.
600 to 1, and then, and there's a large national average, too, that's very similar to that. But also looking at how counselors, with their roles, with the use of technology, maybe some of the responsibilities of the counselors, because we do have interactive technology that allows students to go in and do certain things with career and technical education, and looking on some of these online websites, and maybe integrating the use of technology with the counseling role. We've also seen schools that have done some creative things, with bringing in maybe some paraprofessional counselors. My son goes to Lansing School District, and they have what they call PEACE counselors to kind of help with some of the behavioral issues. So that role of the school counselor is very specific, but then there are other ways of integrating technology and using parapros to kind of help offset that high ratio of students to counselors. And I don't know if Mike wanted to say anything else about that.
Yeah, we talked at length about this yesterday. One of the things that I think we need to just face reality, in the spirit of John's question, is these judgments are going to be made by local boards, because they don't have many good choices, you know, so, and you're going to see each entity, whether it's a, an arts program, band, counselors, there are going to be people competing for these. So what we've got at was kind of what both Beatrice and Flora is saying, that we have to help them redefine their role, to a degree. We have to be open to differentiated staffing, because there are some things now, because of technology, that are lesser trained in, not in a demeaning sense, but not trained as a counselor, but trained in the CTE example. You look at what kids can do online in terms of their applications for College Now, and FACA applications, and all the rest, and the supports that are there in software, which you're used to go by hand with, you know, in fact, as a counselor, that can help these ratios. So I think it, what we asked to happen yesterday, and, you know, along with kind of the spirit of what Liz said, where you can get hold of some things before they go out, we wanted to get hold of this issue before it goes out, to try to get the best thinking on how do you live with this changing dynamic? Because we can just, I don't want to say pretend, we can say, ideally, this would be the load, but knowing deep down, that's not what districts are going to do. So how do you start leading them towards a different way of thinking about that, including differentiated staffing? You know, it's kind of what the medical profession and others are doing, and Nancy, please.
To go along with that, to take that one step further, I think the conundrum that I, that I've certainly witnessed, I'm sure we all have, is that districts, in their attempt to meet the needs of their students and the counseling concerns that exist, but the lack of funding to have certified credentialed counselors run the gamut of this alternative individual that they're using. And what concerns me is when I see in districts, what I'm starting to see a lot is what they call behavioral specialists. And basically, they're the long arm of the law, and they don't have any knowledge or understanding or training themselves. Not that they aren't well-intended, good-hearted people, but I'm just wondering, to what end are we serving, truly serving the needs of students when that takes place? And does it undermine, in a district's mind, the need for this credentialed person, if I can get a behavioral specialist there and pay him a third of the salary, or her? And I don't have any answers, I wish I did, but I'm just wondering, what's the thinking on this? What are you looking at there?
Well, I, we, you know, we don't credential those individuals, and, you know, if the behavioral specialist, if the district is providing them the appropriate training on how to interact with the students and work with the students, that they're that first responder with regard to behavioral problems, then, you know, if it's really bad, perhaps they turn that over to the school counselor. I don't have any answers for it. I can remember years ago when they had hall monitors in the schools, and I don't know that they do that, or if these people are sort of like the hall monitors, so, and you're right, I think it is a conundrum, what do you do when you don't have enough of the trained specialists that you need, and you're trying to, you know, offset that with some paraprofessionals or some other types of individuals, so. But I think the emphasis should be on the training that's provided at the district level to those individuals.
And a number of those needs of those behavior specialists are coming through our myblissi, our response to intervention, so they do go through extensive training to be ready to do that, but they're different roles. I think that's what, what we're trying to do with these standards, is saying, this is the role of the counselor as we've defined it, knowing that there's changes with the technology, et cetera. But I probably didn't explain myself well. I absolutely agree with you, and I guess the question I have in reference to what we're looking at here today, is as wonderful as this is, and I love the idea that you've got an internship and a practicum now involved with this, which makes so much sense. I don't know why on earth we would expect our counselors to be able to intuit this in a classroom, and we know that teachers can't do it, why would they be able to do it, you know? So I think this is wonderful, but I'm thinking of myself as a student coming into this situation, and here's what I have to go through to get this certification, this license, and yet, knowing what the budgets are like in schools, knowing that the chances of me getting hired are slim and next to none, why would I go through this if I can become a behavioral specialist? And that's the question I have. How do we address the needs that we know exist because they're here? We have these, we have these criteria now that are very clearly defined. How do we address that? If there's very little chance of actually getting those individuals hired, who's going to take this?
Good question. Do you don't have an answer?
I don't have an answer either.
Kathy, then.
Well, I had a similar question, when Mike was talking about they're using more parapros, and then Flora was talking about using more parapros, I was concerned about what kind of training they have to have, if they're just a parapro that's supposed to keep order in a classroom, and they give them something else to do, but they haven't trained them. That's not helpful.
No.
Well, in fact, we were just talking about that yesterday as well, in our conversation, is that we do have, are the standards for professional, for parapro training?
No, we don't have...
Not standards, but they're guidelines.
Guidelines.
So that kind of caused some of our staff to say, we should take a look at those to make sure that those are really what they need to be.
We do have guidelines, at least, but there's no requirement that they follow them. I mean, they just do what they want to do. So I agree with Nancy, why would they hire higher-paid counselors when they can put somebody else in them? There's no training.
You know, I think...
There's something wrong with this picture.
But not with this. I think this is wonderful.
No, no, not with the requirements, if we could get them.
Right.
You know, with the reform package that was signed in early January, I think the whole world has changed, and I wanted to connect it to this, even though it may seem disjointed. Everyone now has a goal of student achievement, growth, and I think districts are going to start to make different decisions for themselves, because we're a local-controlled place, about what's going to get more of their kids to these higher levels of achievement, because everyone's evaluation, ultimately, not just teachers, with all the press around teachers, as I said, I think our evaluation should be based on a million and a half kids having academic growth. But what I'm getting at is, once the board, the legislature, and everyone sets these targets, which we have, I think it changes the dynamic about winking and saying, well, you know, that's an easy budget decision, but by the way, it's not going to get us to where we need to get when we're going to be measured. So I'm really actually more hopeful with that, that people will make the right calls about when you need the properly-trained person versus when you could maybe use a lesser-trained person to run a software program with a student, for example. And I mean, I think that's really, in our mind, as we've talked about this the last few weeks, it starts to change everything. Because, I mean, I hate to admit this, but 20 years ago, as a superintendent, you know, a lot of times what drove things were 700 people showed up because they didn't like the fact that you changed a few bus stops, and no one showed up if the math scores were horrible. And that's changed dramatically, so I'm very confident that with these new targets, that people will have a different mindset. I think it was, I don't remember the order, no, I'm sorry, Liz, and Nancy, and Rob.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, as this conversation is going on, and the use of the counseling technician, or parapro, and all of these things, and I was trying to look quickly through the standards to see if there was anything in there on developing leadership skills or team management kinds of skills, because I'm thinking that, you know, looking to the future, I don't see that the economic reset is going to change terribly much, and it may well be that this highly-trained counselor, who has a lot of skills and knowledge about techniques and interaction, could lead a group of technicians, or whatever, to help kids get on and do...
Sure, a conversation, yes.
You know, and to do their FACAs online and stuff like that, because even though that stuff is available online...
The kids will need it.
If you're in 11th grade, you need a coach to fill it out, and, you know...
Well, and it's funny to Liz, because you kind of came to the same conclusion we did, as we started talking through that, the counselor's role may change so that they're, so if you don't have them trained in how to do that supervision and that coordination, so...
Right, and I'm looking, and I don't see a content standard guideline right here, but maybe...
Yeah, we just talked about it yesterday.
Throw one in before you put it out, and then people will comment on it and enrich it better than I'm doing right here, but I can see that the counseling office is the headquarters, so...
Yep.
We'll address that.
Nancy, and Rob, please.
You know, as I hear what you're saying, Mike, about the way the landscape is changing dramatically based on the reform package that was passed in January, it reminds me of another initiative that is totally off the ground yet, but certainly has been suggested at the legislative level, that 28% of non-classroom expenditures over that is too much, and we ought to penalize people for that. This would fall within that 28% non-classroom. And so I think it behooves all of us on the board, certainly, and I know as you work with the legislature, to help them understand what some of those costs are, and what the definition really covers. And if they want classroom improvement and student growth, that some of these non-classroom expenditures aren't just something that's nice, but essential. And so I think that this certainly falls within that realm. I know Lisa and I talked with, briefly, about that piece of legislation that's kind of roaming around right now, and really needing to help people understand what's within that pot, so that there's an authentic understanding of what it really means, because I think it can be misleading to say it's not a direct classroom expenditure. I certainly would not put this as a direct classroom expenditure, but invaluable nonetheless. So, just a thought.
Good point, thank you. Rob, please.
That was a perfect segue to where I wanted to go, because we keep talking about the investment in socio-emotional education and that part of the education for the child. And I go back to a couple of months ago, and we had the whole mental health requirements that we were talking about, and how this just played into that. Nancy had raised an interesting point, though, as opposed, you know, comparing the behavior specialist to a school counselor position. And I'm not, I'm not concerned that we would eliminate the school counseling positions, and I don't think the districts would ever touch that. There have been reductions, they're certainly being spread much thinner, and they've got a higher caseload, but we've experienced the same thing with social workers within the district, and how they have also been reduced. But there are certain positions that they are the qualified individuals that districts have got to invest in for that socio-emotional piece, and I don't think they would be at risk. There will be enough individuals, current teachers, who will pursue that, this credential, because they have a calling for it. And I don't, and I also don't worry that they would, be fearful that they would be sort of blocked out because the behavioral specialist position is in place. Most districts have crisis teams and whatnot in place within the buildings to be dealing with behavior issues, so we can free up the counselor for when it's really a counselor need.
Okay, good to hear.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is a presentation on the proposed standards for preparation of American Sign Language teachers. And I think joining us...
Hi, good, hi, group, this is Reg, just wanted to let you all know I'm on.
You're still on the phone.
Oh, I didn't know you were going to be on the phone.
Thank you, Reg. We heard you pipe in a little bit ago with that beep.
Okay.
It's amazing how your voice...
I'm running a roundtable discussion, so I'm just taking time for a bit.
Okay, thank you. And Sally and Flora again, and I think we have another sub, where Bonnie's coming in now. We just have a...
This is the Flora Jenkins Show, yeah.
Bonnie, thanks for joining us also, and, you know, in order to provide teachers the prep required to meet the needs of K-12 school districts, new endorsement standards for the preparation of American Sign Language teachers are required, and that's where we're going with this. So Sally, please.
Yep. A number of K-12 school districts are beginning to offer American Sign Language as the option in meeting the required two years of world languages, and so one of the things we needed to do was to have standards that would be the frameworks for teachers of those world languages, and these have been reviewed by the national ASL experts.
I'm just going to turn it over to Dr. Rockefeller, because she really has worked with this group to get these standards here at this point, so Bonnie, it's yours.
Appreciate the opportunity to bring these standards to the board, and I do want to take the time, if I might, to acknowledge the visitors we have with us this morning from this committee, because while Bonnie might have facilitated the structures that needed to happen here, the work and the content of the standards was developed by the... work and the content of the standards was developed by the Content Development Committee, which includes chairs, Barbara Sanderson's with us today, John Hirsch is also with us, the co-chair, as well as Jackie Mosberg is the facilitator that rounded this group up for me and handled it outside of the office staffing. And then we have two other committee members that are working as interpreters this morning, Cynthia Dees and Maureen Wagner are also with us. I have asked them to join us today in case there were some questions you might have about, specifically about American Sign Language, that I do not have the content knowledge to be able to answer. So I appreciate you letting me invite them. I wanted to point out to you that what we're doing here in Michigan is new nationally as well, where American Sign Language is being incorporated under the umbrella of world languages. The world languages standards that we developed earlier and brought to you 29 different standards at one point, we used that same framework to develop these standards. So there's a consistency and a equal equity, if you will, relative to how American Sign Language is viewed in relationship to world languages. You have also noted in your packet that these languages, this set of standards, was vetted and reviewed by some national experts in the field before they've gotten to this point. So we feel pretty confident in bringing those to you. We'd also like to point out that we provided some background information in this packet only because it's a new place for American Sign Language to take its place in the world language umbrella. So we wanted to point that out to you and give you a little background relative to it. Given that, you've noticed that on Standard 1.1, which is the proficiency level that's required of American Sign Languages, that we have left that somewhat open specifically because there's some discussion being interacted with currently relative to what Michigan is going to approve as the proficiency level for interpreters and the testing that's going on at that point. And when that is settled, then we'll be able to more definitively say, these are the tools that we use to determine the proficiency level of American Sign Language teachers in using American Sign Language. The same as we have for other world languages, we have a proficiency level that has been set, and we've identified ways of assessing that. So that is an open-ended piece there, and as soon as we can define that, definitely. At this point, according to my committee members, Flippy, the Sign Language Proficiency interview is the one that seems to be the privileged one at this point and one we're looking at. But we will wait for the Department of D-LEG to settle on theirs, and then we will talk with them and negotiate with the Special Education Unit and D-LEG Unit to determine the appropriate assessments. And with that, I guess I would open it up to questions for you all.
And I would go to Mike, but how about you?
Well, thank you, Bonnie. Certainly is timely. I think it's, we've been having a lot of discussion about this in the last few months. So does anybody have any comments, questions?
I'm just glad that somebody liked it.
Well, I wondered, in view of the discussion we had a few months ago about the program at Michigan State being cut back, what's the relationship of all of this proposal to what they are doing and how will this, if we get this approved, how will that affect other universities and programs?
Well, they're two different, they're two different things. So, two different things, but somewhat related. So what Jackie Thompson, who's the Director of Special Education, is going to be pulling together a task force, including Dr. Carolines from MSU, to take a look at not just the hearing impaired, but all of the low incidence programs because...
Oh, well, that's good. I didn't know that that was happening.
Yeah.
So has she done that or is she in the process of doing that?
They're going to be in the process of, it'll probably get started sometime this spring. Because it's not, as Jackie, we were the first to tell you, it's not just the hearing impaired program, it's all of the low incidence programs where the universities, it's such a small number of students. So that's the hearing impaired program. This is the American Sign Language. So they're different, but somewhat related.
And if I might, we're ramping up to be able to pull together the teacher prep institutions that may be interested in using this as an endorsement program under the world languages with collaborating with community colleges that already have strong ASL programs in place. So that would provide the content beyond the pedagogy, beyond the, well, inclusive of the cultural aspects as well. So they will be utilizing what's already in place, but probably at a community college level. And we're going to encourage them to start working out those kind of partnerships so we can ramp this up fairly quickly without the institutions having to think about pulling in additional staffing to create a new department or to create a new cadre instructors, if you will, but utilizing what's already in the field. That'll be a different partnership than they've had because it's so strongly in the content and culture relying elsewhere than within the teacher ed department. But I think it will happen quickly for us.
Well, and you start to look at the feeder system, students in...
Say that again, please, Sally.
Eventually, elementary, middle school, and high school.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you look at it as a feeder system, that when we start to get elementary, middle school, and high school students fluent in American Sign Language, that may be something that starts to trigger for them that what do they want to do as a long-term career? So they've got that experience there.
Right. Cassandra?
And it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this would be very appropriate for the alternative certification. This is the type, the exact type of thing that if it's not making sense for universities to offer, which I think would be very unfortunate, but that someone else could come in and offer it as an alternative certification.
That's a great point. Yep.
That's an interesting point. Yeah. Liz, did you want to say something?
No, I just, yes, and in terms of the timing, I think it's very important that we get these standards in place so that as we're talking to colleges, community colleges, alternative certifiers, they know what it is and they need to prepare people to do. So, you know, if we set the expectation, it's really, it's really important. So I'm glad to see it moving right along.
Do you think that that committee of the task force will be in place pretty soon? Jackie, this thing, it will probably start in the spring.
Okay. This is the one on, I'm sorry, I missed that for a moment.
The American Sign Language. This is the task force that Jackie is putting together with to look at the programs of...
Stuff we talked about yesterday, the low incidence, stuff that wasn't going to come up at this meeting. Trust me sometimes, okay? I kind of know what I'm doing. I've done this for a long time.
I'd like to leave one more point of information.
It's not going to come up. It's a totally different issue. Excuse me.
The point of information...
We discussed it at the planning session.
Coming up is that because we have the framework in place for world languages, you can anticipate the Ashenibawabwin Ojibwe language, the native cultural language, is coming forward, and we're almost ready except for the proficiency, Standard 1.1, identifying people that will be able to help us do that proficiency assessment because it's a native piece that we're going to have to identify. But they are just about in place. And with that, we would hope that we will be closing out the world languages that we've been trying to put into place in meeting all the special needs, special populations that are currently in place in Michigan.
Oh, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Football players at University of Michigan are Ojibways experts. Some of you may have noticed, that's one of the courses that they all take to try to take an easy course.
Really?
They're being exposed at Ann Arbor News. Well, they have an instructor who specializes in teaching football players Ojibway, along with they have a couple of faculty who like teach 250 independent studies, you know. This was the scandal du jour last year about how they're steering their athletes into easy courses.
Oh, I didn't think that Ojibway would be...
It's giving Ojibway a bad name, but...
Because it's certainly not an easy, at least if you do it right.
But you would never know, so it's perfect. Who knows if someone actually knows how to speak the Ojibway because no one can tell.
Well, we'll know when we've got standards.
Right.
If they go up to the Sioux, they'll know.
That's right. You found out.
Is Nancy just on the side or is she...
Nancy, she went down here.
Well, what happened?
No, I just, this is pretty important, and I really, it's all important, but I wanted to make sure all our board members heard this. So let me think about how I'm going to do this for a minute. Can you get a sense of whether she's just a minute away or 10 minutes away?
She just went forward.
Well, she went that way.
First of all, quick.
No, no, no. I wouldn't bring this up if she went that way, but she went that way, so...